Let me start by introducing our guest today. Grace Ma has served on the Santa Clara County Board of Education since 2007. She's on the board of SV2, a giving community working to accelerate equity through grant making and impact investing. Grace was board president of Stevenson's House, a low-income senior housing program in Palo Alto, and was on that board for nine years. She was also a parent volunteer in Palo Alto's public schools and initiated the Mandarin immersion program there. Grace is a recovering engineer. I love that phrase. I actually use it myself in multiple contexts, but I'll spare you those. From the high-tech industry with 18 years of experience, including project management and sales, she has a BS from Caltech and an MS from Cal, only goes to schools with Cal in the name apparently. And Grace and her husband of 40 years live in Palo Alto. She is an avid quilter and has exhibited her work at local quilt shows. Welcome, Grace.
Thank you very much.
No problem. All right. Jessica. Jessica Spicer is a firm believer that the demographics you are born into should not determine your destiny. She knows from firsthand experience that a strong public school education can help you succeed, no matter the demographics in which you are born. She grew up with an alcoholic, often drug-addicted, rarely-employed, single mother who often brought physically and mentally abusive men into their lives as her father died when she was six. The one positive constant she had in her life was her public school. With the academic and mental support of the teachers, counselors, and staff of her school system, along with her own hard work, she's able to rise up out of a terrible situation and succeed, gaining early admission to Wellesley College. Her life experiences have given her the fire to ensure all students born into devastating demographics and situations have the ability to reach their potential and succeed, and that teachers are supported in their service to do the same. She brought that fire to her work of nearly eight years on the Los Altos School District Board of Trustees, always focusing on how the district is serving its most vulnerable students, and will continue to do the same for the larger population of vulnerable and underserved students across the entirety of Santa Clara County if elected to the Santa Clara County Board of Education. Jessica lives in Los Altos with her husband and three children. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you.
So we're really thrilled to have both of you with us today. We know it's a super-busy time for candidates, and as you can see from the turnout, this is a topic that is really important to the residents of Los Altos and the broader community. So we don't necessarily have a timer that we're going to display on screen, but I'd ask that you keep your responses to roughly 60, 90 seconds. If it seems like somebody's dominating the conversation, I might try and dial you back a little bit. Please don't be offended, but we're just trying to get through as many questions as we can, and then also get to the audience questions. So let's get started. So I think many of us are familiar with our local school boards, LASD and MBLA, but perhaps as a group, less familiar with the county board of education. So I'll start with Grace on this one. Grace, could you tell us about the roles and responsibilities of a trustee for the county board? And then we'll go to Jessica after that.
Okay. So the county board of education is kind of abstracted, one level, if you will, from the local school districts. And so in a sense, I mean, everybody knows and loves their local school district, board members, superintendent, teachers, principals, and they're all elected locally by you guys. And the superintendent is appointed by your local school board. And it's a school district is pretty autonomous. So the county board is elected separately. We have our own superintendent that we appoint, but we don't have any authority or supervisory, you know, kind of thing with the local school districts. We really are a largely service organization to the 31 districts in the county. And as a board, we approve a huge budget. We also do a few specific things that are in ed code for school boards. We appeal charter school denials. We appeal, oops, trying to keep my timer to 60 seconds. We appeal student inter-district transfers. We also appeal, I mean, we're an appellate body to expulsion. And so those are three things that we very specifically, as a board, do. But the county office does lots of services for school districts like payroll, technology, networking, professional development, things like that. And then the school districts, I'm sorry, and then the county office also has its own schools. We serve special ed students. We serve migrant students. We have a migrant education group. We also look over our foster kids. We look over the kids who are incarcerated. So we're kind of a safety net for a lot of the students that there's not enough in each district. So we kind of pool them by economy of scale and kind of take care of them. And those are usually the most vulnerable kids in the county. Also preschool, Head Start, and California State preschool, both of them for low-income families.
All right. And Jessica, same question. How do you view the roles and responsibilities of a trustee for the county board?
Well, it's interesting is that like she covered it all, and she should know her job, so that's great. I was like, oh, she pretty much covered everything I would say. So, but yes, it is an appellate body for charters, expulsions, and inter-district transfers. It's a service provider for all 31 districts. There are 31 districts in Santa Clara County. And quite literally, like my paycheck is signed by Mary Ann Dewan. They have the treasury for the entirety of all 31 districts. And while they do have a big budget, there is a flat budget as it relates to their specific services. One of the things I learned while running for office and following what they're doing is, in fact, their budget is, we're basic aid, they're basic aid, but what it means for them is that they don't get to keep on, keep any reserve that the county would otherwise get to get. They have to send it back to the state. And so they have a certain amount, and most recently, I believe it was close to $100 million that had to be sent back to the state, which is a story for another day for sure, because it's very complicated.
Okay, great. And before there are any conspiracy theorists out there, I do have a stopwatch here, and so I'm keeping an eye on things, trying to keep it balanced. I'm sure someone will add it up at the end and say, oh, so-and-so got an extra 30 seconds. Oh, my gosh. All right, let's keep going. So this one's for Jessica. Why are you running for the county board of education?
Good question. Thank you. It really goes back to my background. I grew, as you said, I grew up very low income and was able to rise up because of my public education. And as explained, the county board and office of education truly served the most underserved kids, and I was an underserved kid. And that, having to live through that and that perspective, made sure that when I grew up and had kids and could give back to the community, I went straight to, not straight, but I got myself to be a trustee at Los Altos School District and always focusing on the most underserved kids. And now I'm ready to go to the county where there is more of those students and truly because the county office and board of education is the safety net of public education, I feel like it is the place for me to be, to really continue the work that I want to do. Thank you.
Okay, great. And Grace, why are you running for the county board of education?
Okay, so I've been on the board for 17 years. This is my fifth campaign and election. I do really enjoy the county board position a lot. And so I think that, as Jessica was saying, for me, the county board, it gives me a great cross-section of kind of Santa Clara County and society almost. I mean, we all live in North County, which is a little bit of an ivory tower. And so when I first was appointed and then re-elected to this board, I really appreciated all the different kinds of people and children and students that we serve. As I mentioned, we go all the way down to Gilroy, all the way across to Mupitas and Berriessa, and then North County here in Palo Alto is the most north. We also go into the mountain areas, going up into the Santa Cruz Mountains. So the whole board, there's seven of us, cover a huge geographic area. Santa Clara County is like the sixth-largest district in the state, so it's really a great, not even microcosm, macrocosm of the state. We have rural, we have small school districts, we have large school districts, San Jose Unified, Eastside Union High School. And I feel that being able to serve all those constituents is really important, and I've enjoyed doing it, and I want to do it for more years.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to switch this over to speaker mode so we can see the candidates instead of looking at all of our faces. Hopefully that's okay. So next question to Grace. When you look at your tenure, what issue have you not made as much progress on as you had hoped before you started? Tough one.
Okay. A few things. I mean, funding for education has always been not enough. I'll just put it that way. California is one of the underfunded in the past, certainly, states in the union, considering we're one of the largest economic powers in the world. I think there was some recent information saying that, you know, watch out, Germany. California, if we were a country, would be like number six, that Germany is number five, six, and so we're up and coming. So for a long time, forever actually, since Prop 13, when I was really young, California used to fund education really highly. And so with Prop 13, you know, it got cut, and so we can go into that history. But I've always fought for more funding for education. I support the split role. I worked on that campaign that the League of Women Voters helped to also support. Unfortunately, it lost. I also go and advocate up in Sacramento on behalf of the county board. We have a lobbyist, and we go up to Sacramento. I was just recently in Washington DC, also with CSBA, the California School Board Association, to go and lobby for more funding. And sometimes you can't just say, you want to throw money at the problem, because we can't, but rather, you know, we want to fix certain things, we want to earmark certain things, and that's unfortunately something that's a tough struggle. And I haven't been able to get that windfall or win the lottery for California Lottery to have education get the money it deserves. Because when I was a student, we were number one.
Okay, great, thank you. Jessica, when you look at the current board, what is the primary issue you think has not been sufficiently addressed?
Oh, it's a slightly different question.
Well, one is an incumbent and one is a, you know...
Yes. Well, in my head, I was preparing a, like what I could have done, you know, as a trustee at Los Altos School District, and so it is slightly different. I guess it's truly equity in education across the board. And one of the things I want to do if elected is truly head up or get the Office of Education to be a convening body for all local 31 districts towards every student graduating with the A to G requirements met. And what that would mean is that those students could go to UC or Cal, not, it's not like they're going straight to Berkeley per se, but they would be able to go to one of those for sure, immediate enrollment into the one of them. But even if they decide not to go to college, they could go straight into trade school and they'd be more educated, they could take some time off. And then when they decide to, they found their passion and decide to go back to school, they don't have to do any more requirements. They're set to go to a UC. And if they just decide to not go off to school, they're more educated, and we have a more educated community. So thank you.
Okay, great. Next question, we'll move on. This one's for Jessica. Are you satisfied with the progress on affordable housing for teachers and administrative staff in Santa Clara County? And if elected, what specific proposals would you make?
I will never be satisfied, but I have been happy with the teacher housing that Joe Semidion helped and the board supervisors helped us get in North County, so much so that our school district, Los Altos School District, bought in the double the amount that they originally allotted us. And so I'm happy with that, but I am always advocating with our local legislators around that in order to make it even easier for us to do housing. We do have the ability now, if on our own property, to create it without having to go to the city for zoning. That is a new law that came into place. But I will always be looking for ways that it can be funded more easily, because it is a travesty that our teachers and staff members and city employees can't live anywhere near where they work. So thank you.
All right. Grace, are you satisfied with the progress on affordable housing for teachers and administrative staff in Santa Clara County? And if re-elected, what specific proposals would you make?
So I'm likewise not satisfied. I feel that teachers in general are not paid enough, the profession is not elevated enough, respected in our society, that we need to really honor and respect and kind of cherish teachers more than what we do. I don't know if some people are aware in the Asian culture, you know, old-style Chinese culture, teachers are regarded almost like gods, because they are entrusted with our precious treasure of children. And so with respect to housing, absolutely. Palo Alto Unified and Los Altos, and I think Mountain View, Los Altos High School District have all bought into Joe Semidion's North County housing. That is fantastic. We need more of that. Mountain View, Wisman School District itself built its own set of housing. They're having a ribbon cutting in a few weeks, and so you could all come over and take a look at that. That's going to be just fantastic. Just as a suggestion, with respect to land and usage of land, I mean, Los Altos School District does have that plot of land over at the coal site that could be really good for teacher housing, just as a consideration. And I have attended and really appreciated, there was a state-led CSBA workshop on teacher housing that we had a little presentation at the County School Board Association conference just last weekend. And there's workshops, and there was money also, but none of us in Santa Clara County really applied for that money. But they're having one more workshop for information of just kind of how to do it, because there's a number of counties and cities and school districts across the state that have done their own construction, and this workshop is supposed to help figure out how to do it, zoning, developing, pricing, all that kind of stuff, cost. And I'm interested in attending one of those workshops.
Grace, the ongoing feud between LASD and Bullis Charter School has really divided our community for two decades. You recently voted to renew the BCS charter in spite of a number of issues cited by staff. Are you satisfied with the outcome of the charter renewal? And what would you change if you could?
And so it's pretty complicated. If any of you are really, really interested, you can watch our meeting, which ended at 1:30 that night. We had four, I think it was four different motions of all sorts, supporting the renewal, supporting the renewal with conditions, which is what our staff presented. We have a very good diligent charter school staff and department. And so their recommendation was to approve the renewal for five years with a certain number of conditions. The conditions were tricky from Bullis's standpoint. There was one particular condition that they were not really crazy about. And so we made a bunch of motions, some of them for renewal, some of them, one motion was against renewal, one was the renewal with no conditions, taking the conditions out that our staff had predicted or had projected. Some of them were keeping the conditions or changing the amount of time. So we went around and around and around, four different motions, all of them basically four-three, so it was a split board, not always the same split, so to speak, every time. And the final decision was to go with a, basically what the charter school department said, to go ahead and do a conditional approval with all the conditions as recommended by staff. And it was the best compromise, again, kind of a four-three thing that people could go, could agree with, that our board could agree with. There was later resubmission of the petition where Bullis did say that they were willing to include the conditions inside the petition as an amendment, because as it was approved, the conditions would have gone through an MOU process, which takes a long time to negotiate, not only those conditions which are stated, but also operational, insurance, safety, all that kind of other stuff. So an MOU takes a lot of discussion, which would have extended the decision until December, because one of my colleagues wanted to make sure that the MOU, negotiated MOU, would come back to the board for review, as opposed to just a superintendent kind of signing it, which is in the past.
All right, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I was getting to two minutes here.
Yes, yes.
All right. So Jessica, are you satisfied with the outcome of the charter renewal? And what would you change if you could?
I'm generally pleased with how it went down. I do agree that it should have been renewed with conditions. One thing that was slightly different from the staff's recommendation was the last vote also required that their preference for free and reduced lunch does not have a cap anymore. It had a cap at 10%. They, a board member asked that that be pulled off, and then in the last vote, that cap was pulled off. I would have liked that one to be up to number one and not number two in the preference order. So I guess that would be something else I would have liked to see. And I'd also like ponies, so I'm not going to get that. I do agree that the renewal should have been done with conditions. Their petition was woefully deficient. Two-thirds of what was needed for the renewal documentation was not included, and that is why it has to come back to them in December, was to not only, you know, go through and have the MOU of conditions, but also get the information that they had asked for in the first place. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. This one's for Jessica. The subject of the 10th school site in Los Altos has dragged on for years. Do you believe this will ever get resolved? And if so, how?
Speaking of ponies, I, you know, I have been actively working on it since, actually, I ran the bond in 2014. As a citizen, I ran the bond because I wanted to help solve the facilities issue for Bullis Charter School and our district 10 years ago. We ran that bond for 10 schools, 10 sites. And if we had any money left over, it would be used to renovate our facilities. And then, you know, they went around trying to find a property, and we didn't really find a property that was anywhere near a size that could take Bullis Charter School and that was in a road that one could travel on until 2018, and then came up with the complicated but great collaborative deal with the City of Mountain View to buy the 10th site in 2019. And so, and the idea was, you know, either that would be, end up being an LASD facility or be a facility for a Bullis Charter School. And I do hope that, yes, we do solve this issue. Most of my board would like Bullis Charter School to be at that site, and they would like, were willing to negotiate and had been negotiating to that effect very recently. And it doesn't have to be all of them. We have talked, we have said that we are willing to have a footprint at another one of our schools, knowing that their size is larger. One point I want to make is that we cannot put teacher housing on that plot of land because of the agreement with the City of Mountain View that it will be for a school anyway.
Okay.
I could talk about this for hours, but I will stop now.
All right, thank you. And Grace, same question to you. Do you believe the 10th site issues will ever get resolved? And if so, how?
So as far as believe, I hope that the 10 site issues will get resolved. I'm not sure if I believe it will be resolved soon, so I'll put it that way. I am an optimist, but as was mentioned, this is a long, long time issue, you know, back to 2014 with that bond. And then there's now another bond that's coming out that will be doing, you know, renovations for all the school sites. It doesn't really mention the 10th school site, so it's not clear where the money for the 10th school is going to be. As far as the facilities plan, which was kind of, well, I guess that it actually hasn't been fully approved by LASD, but that facility plan also doesn't talk about the 10th site. So if the new bond is going to work towards that facility plan, it'd be great if the plan was complete with the 10th site mentioned there, since it's supposed to be a plan for, you know, the next five years, hopefully. That also the plan would include, since it's all facilities, the promises that were made to the City of Mountain View, which include a park and a gym and a school. I don't know the details of that contract or how negotiable it still is, whether it could be negotiated that, you know, with the changing of times, that teacher housing, again, maybe as a benefit to city employees that are also in dire need and can also be essential worker, you know, kind of restrictions that just, again, just as an idea, I don't know implementation or details. But just to really make sure that that site is utilized, it's been sitting for a long time, and not a lot of progress has been made towards actively, you know, drawing up plans or figuring out the finances for what eventually would be on the site. I know that Los Altos very strongly wants Bullis to be there, but I think Bullis has expressed that they're very strongly not interested in being there.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, sorry. I don't mean to keep cutting you off.
I talk a lot, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, next question. Grace, we've seen school enrollment declining and expenses increasing. What should the Santa Clara County Board of Education be doing to provide better mid-to-long-term planning tools, programs, and analysis to help local school districts best navigate this financial squeeze?
Wow.
Good one, huh?
That's a really good one.
I had help on that question.
Okay. Extra gold star. Finances, as I said, is topping up most, not only to get more money, you know, into education in general, but then how do you use it? And being a recovering engineer and having done some sales experience in management before, I am more interested in the fiscal aspects and accountability than some of my colleagues on the board. I usually review the budgets and ask questions almost every meeting about, you know, why is this money there? What is that money there? Just more transparency and accountability. So with respect to school districts now having to deal with declining enrollment and increasing expenses, as I mentioned, we at the county, we do review all of the budgets for all 31 school districts, but we don't specifically advise or tell them how to do it. I mean, as I mentioned, each school district is pretty autonomous. They generally have their own CBOs and their own, you know, accounting departments and planning, et cetera. And they don't ask us for suggestions. Generally, all these school districts have been doing it pretty well for a long time.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm just trying to squeeze in these last few questions. Jessica, what should the Santa Clara County Board of Education be doing to provide better mid-to-long-term planning tools, programs, and analysis to help local districts best navigate this financial squeeze?
Now, that is a good and hard question, like basically Grace said, but I think it is just, all of our budgets are squeezed. all of our budgets are squeezed, whether we're uh, basic aid or LCFF uh, funded. So any more ways that the county office and uh, of education can provide us more and more services, be it ways of buying uh, things more in bulk across thirty-one districts, such that the price goes down uh, for us for things, or more and more professional development, um, it's such that we're um, you know, we, while we pay for that service, um, you know, if, if it's offered more, it's still definitely a better price than if we have to go seek it um, out of our area. Um, and, you know, always, you know, lo- like Grace said, looking at every penny and making sure that we are um, spending it wisely and, and according to what we uh, what we need. And then always making sure that we're advocating, back to the beginning, uh, for more and more um, educational uh, funding uh, for sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, two more questions. I'll ask you guys to keep it to one minute in your responses. Um, uh, Jessica, in your opinion, what are the greatest safety issues faced by our schools today? And what specifically would you do to address these safety issues?
I think the ba- biggest safety issue is in fact related to um, mental health, honestly. Um, and so, you know, making sure not only um, our, our students um, understand, you know, that it's okay to feel not okay, um, and that they have trusted adults and trusted, you know, whether it is a teacher or staff member or psychologist or guidance counselor in the, in, in the schools. Um, and also um, that our teachers also have those resources, because honestly, i- it's a hard job. Um, and also being that uh, you know, mental uh, you know, being there for the kids can be a lot. It can be draining, just even as a parent, to be there and be the better person for my three kids can be a lot. Um, so that is, you know, it, it, if we are making sure that our kids are safe mentally and, and happier and, and have trusted adults and trusted friends, then we don't actually fall into the bigger uh, safety issues that end up being caused by having a mental issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Grace, in your opinion, what are the greatest safety issues faced by our schools today? And what specifically would you do to address these safety issues?
So um, unfortunately, as it may be, um, I've attended two meetings where the uh, big safety issue, which is unspoken uh, for our children and in the, in the county and the state, really everywhere, is um, sex trafficking of children. So um, the challenge team, which meets, you know, once a month of local Los Altos, Mountain View, Sunnyvale um, supporters of youth. Um, it's a meeting that's held at the Mountain View Police Department. They had a wonderful speaker from Marin County talk about unfortunately, the pervasiveness of sex trafficking with children. Um, I, as I mentioned, I have attended the County School Board um, Association Meeting, and uh, Monterey County has done a huge bunch of um, awareness raising about sex trafficking of children. So me and one of my colleagues who attended the conference suggested, we really need in our county to have a um, whoops, youth crisis, youth crisis summit, which includes um, all the things that, that our kids are, you know, dealing with. So sex trafficking, fentanyl and opioid epidemic, mental health, and I, I would even say um, gun safety. Um, so those are the, the big things which are safety issues for our children, physically, mentally, and of um, epidemic and, and crisis proportion.
All right, thank you. Uh, last question, and then we'll go to closing statements, and then we'll go to audience questions. Uh, Grace, what do you support as guidelines for the use of AI and generative AI technologies in our schools? And what specific policies should the board be proposing?
Okay, so AI is a, oops, I'm gonna set my timer. Oh, shoot, okay. So um, AI is a, is a big topic. I mean, we've got a bunch of um, conferences I recently went to also by um, Silicon Valley Leadership Group, talking about AI more as an application and the, the uh, tech trends, but also the, the big topic of, you know, is AI a hope or um, habit? And so there, there's a lot of implications for education. Um, the, there's a, a wonderful talk by Sal Khan about some AI work that uh, Khan Academy has now included in a tutoring um, program and system. I forgot, it's got like, how Khan Lingo or some, some kind of cute name. Um, they've been testing that and using that for the different ways that uh, tutoring can be assisted by AI. And not so much just giving kids the answer, excuse me, but um, to actually learn about the kid as they're interacting, to help coach the kids on how to um, figure out the answer of things. So AI has a lot of potential in education, but um, it's, it's still a little bit wild and wonderful, so it needs to have some guardrails.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, what do you support as guidelines for the use of AI and generative AI technologies in our schools? And what specific policies should the board be proposing?
Uh, good question. Um, AI is, you know, in, in fact, quite, you know, wonderful and also scary at the same time. So really, the guardrails that I would want around it is, you know, not, you know, uh, trust, not trusting that every answer that A- the AI ChatGPT gives you. Um, and, and we're gonna have to have really our, our teachers learning how to use it and, and, and also how to tell uh, train their students to also do the research. Like, yes, it may give you ideas, but you, then you have to check and see whether ChatGPT was in fact correct. Um, because uh, it, you know, it, it is only as smart of, as all the input that was put in uh, to it. While it's getting smarter and smarter, as it were, um, there needs to be uh, more, we need to train our teachers a- around it, um, because it, because it is here, um, and it will be used. Uh, so we might as well make sure they know how to use it and they know how to uh, make sure that their students are uh, uh, know how to use it and can critically think around it. Uh, I think the big deal is actually the critical thinking part.
All right.
Thank you.
So um, we're on to closing comments. Uh, Jessica, if you could take no more than one minute uh, for any closing thoughts?
Um, just thank you all for being here uh, today and uh, participating in our, our first official uh, forum. Um, I really look forward to being on the County Board of Education um, this, starting this uh, December. Um, as I mentioned in my opening statements, uh, this is really my wheelhouse. I grew up underserved. The county serves the most underserved students um, in our area. And I want to uh, bring my pers- perspective uh, to that County Board of Education. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Grace, uh, please take no more than one minute for any closing thoughts?
Thank you again to the coalition and for the audience that's here today. Um, I do feel that with seventeen years of experience in the Santa Clara County School Board, that that is um, very different set of responsibilities than a local school district. And my uh, seventeen years of experience with institutional knowledge, I think can be leveraged and needs to continue. Um, we have on our current board, three uh, board members who have never been school board members at all, who have never been elected officials at all. So we, we need to um, build their skills, which I'm more than happy and really wanting to do and experience. And um, that for me, working for all students in the county, uh, my participation in the Head Start Policy Council, our low-income families, all the way to special ed, um, medically fragile kids down in Guillory, those are uh, two groups that I've worked with particularly this last year. And then I, I think that I bring um, just a lo- a lot of compassion and effort to uh, help those kids uh, all the way across the county. Thank you.
All right. Um, well, Grace and Jessica, thank you so much um, for a great conversation. Um, we're gonna open it up now for audience questions. We have about eleven minutes for that. Um, so please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Remember, one question per person and no speeches, please. Any hands raised? I'm not seeing any. Oh, there's uh, Gary. Please go ahead, Gary.
Uh, thank you, uh, both of you. I'd like to turn back to the uh, to the uh, tenth site issue. I know you talked about that, but I'm wondering, is there a role for the county board to act as a facilitator in this uh, as Joe put it, feud? Thank you.
And is, is that for both candidates or?
Both, yeah.
Okay, wh- why don't we start with Jessica, and then we'll uh, go on to Grace, and I'll reverse it the next time?
I mean, there is a role in that the board, one of the requests we had when uh, the renewal uh, came up, was in fact to put as a condition, or at least have the board tell VCS that, you know, they could meet a lot of their being able to mirror the d- demographics of the district by being placed on uh, the tenth site. So actually putting that in, the agreement would have been a really good, nice to have. Um, in the end, it, it, the, the conditional approval did not have that. Um, but it would have been nice to have that, that uh, would have been a way of facilitating. Um, we have been working together. It just died down recently when we um, could not agree to have, they wanted the uh, our talks with them to be uh, completely confidential. And our Los Altos School District community uh, would not have that. Uh, the last time we came to an agree, and I'll finish quickly, the last time we tried to come to an agreement that had been uh, negotiated in confidence, uh, it nearly uh, killed our community, and we, we're not gonna allow that. Thank you.
All right. Grace, same question.
Um, so the county has tried being a facilitator um, for multiple discussions. Probably twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, a couple of my colleagues, Leon Beachman and Anna Song, tried to bring together the community. We had some work with um, some of the faith organizations in Los Altos to bring, bring both sides together to talk about it. Uh, facilities is one of the most litigious areas in charter schools totally. Um, I remember going to board meetings at both LASD and at uh, Bullis Charter School, where each side would uh, basically budget a million dollars for legal counsel every year to deal with the li- litigation or potential litigation dealing with facilities. Unfortunately, and I, I think um, Jessica knows that, that uh, the county board as an authorizer for the school does not have any um, jurisdiction or ability to uh, tell, uh, suggest, recommend the location for the Bullis Charter School. It is a facility strictly between Los Altos and Bullis that they have to negotiate. It was a real blessing, I think, for um, the five-year break when um, both sides agreed that they were not gonna deal with facilities, because we had a COVID, we had all these other kinds of things, and, and we actually had some calm. Um, we did not have fights. It was very peaceful. I really, really appreciated that. Um, now that that uh, truce is over, um, I'm, I really don't like to anticipate the, the furor that, that will probably come forth with um, the tenth site discussion. And um, it, it, it's unfortunately something that we could try to facilitate, but I, I think again, that um, we don't have any, any leverage there. And uh, there hasn't been much success when, when we have tried to um, meet, meet the minds together. With respect to the confidentiality, my only comment is that um, usually uh, board discussions on real estate is confidential and closed session. So um, that's, I think, one, one consideration to uh, throw in there.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, we're gonna try to get to everybody's questions, but um, the candidates need to go at nine thirty, so I'll do my best. Janine, uh, your question, please.
Excuse me, this is a question for both candidates. Um, it refers back to the issue of, you know, the limited uh, ability that the board has to tell the districts what to do. Uh, my question is this, can, would it be possible for the board to issue advisories that can go to the public, that can be specific around one or more districts as applicable, so that at least from a public transparency standpoint, they're aware that these advisories are coming out, and therefore you're basically educating the public on what kinds of questions to ask their particular local district? Is there something preventing that from happening? Thank you.
All right, let's start with Grace on this one, um, and try to keep it to one minute, if you could.
Okay, thank you. Um, the board does issue um, I, I guess advisories is kind of hard to, for me to understand exactly what you mean. So I'll just say that, that the board does issue uh, resolutions um, that do get uh, publicized and presumably sent to all of the school districts, probably to um, the superintendents, but um, it, a lot of them are um, in press releases or posted publicly on our website, and those resolutions are with respect to um, you know, non-bullying, uh, no discrimination, um, anti-fentanyl. Um, I think we even had one on anti-vaping, which I, I really pushed for a long time ago. And so those advisories are, are there, um, but as I said before, school districts are autonomous. They can quite frankly, take it or leave it, and um, without being able to kind of mandate, put some teeth behind it, um, it, it's, it's just another, you know, opinion and awareness that, that our board tries to bring, but that can um, do or not do anything at the, the school district level.
All right, Jessica.
Uh, yeah, as she said, they, they, they do do resolutions, and they don't ne- necessarily have teeth. We don't see them, like, it's not sent to me as a trustee in Los Altos School District. I see them because I'm reading your agenda. Um, but another way that uh, beyond advisories, Janine, another way it could be done is that, you know, if there are certain efforts that we, uh, the board cares about, it could be that there are, the Office of Education is putting together trainings uh, et cetera, on that subject matter. Um, whatever it, it, it may be. I don't know exactly what advice, kind of specific advisories you're thinking about, but like, say it's equity or making sure that we systemically make sure education is best for all, all kids, no matter their background, race, et cetera. Perhaps it is a uh, training in that respect. Thank you.
Also budgeting.
Yeah, yes.
All right, let's go to Dennis.
Yes, going back to charter schools, each of you, what do you feel the role of a charter school is as related to the district?
All right, I think it's Jessica's turn to go first. Go ahead.
All right, well, as it relates to the, when charter schools uh, you know, came into fruition, or the guy who kind of wrote the white paper on it, the idea of charter schools was that it would be a pilot program in the area, and that um, in that pilot program, uh, once, what things that they learned, the good things that they learned would be shared with a local district. But that's not what has happened across the country. Since the charter schools were born, um, it has become more of a competitive uh, situation, and that is uh, it's not best for our districts. Our districts are better if they're collaborating and learning from each other. We're all lifelong learners. Um, and, and in Los Altos School District, in fact, we pilot programs within different schools and then see if they work, and if they work, we then use them across our, the rest of our uh, our schools in the district. Thank you.
All right, Grace.
Um, so charter schools have a role, I think, across the country. I mean, that's why, you know, thirty years ago, I think Minnesota was the first state to initiate charter schools. California was probably the second. And um, actually, contrary to what was just said, it specifically says in the California Ed Code and charter schools, that charter schools are intended to be uh, competitive and to raise the bar for all school districts. And so by, as Jessica was saying, by piloting innovative programs, um, different kinds of curriculum, different uh, school culture, different kinds of um, even uh, frameworks of uh, the infrastructure for schools, that any, any of those kinds of innovations are um, encouraged and are really mandated by the charter school, that the, uh, by, mandated by Ed Code to support charter schools. There's a preference for uh, charter schools to support underserved communities, but the main thrust is to give parents a choice for something that's, that's different, innovative. And as Jessica said, ideally um, shared with the school district, so that again, all, all districts, um, all school education is elevated.
All right, let's uh, Liz, if you got a quick one and some quick responses, let's go for it. Uh, you need to unmute, Liz.
Sorry about that. Ba- basically for Grace, I believe you were on the County Board of uh, Education back when our charter school was approved. Do, do you, looking back, do you like that vote or not?
Okay, um, thanks for the question, Liz. Actually, I- Okay. Thanks for the question, Liz. Actually, I started on the board after the charter school was approved. And so I did attend that meeting and was aware of kind of what's been going on with charter schools and the Los Altos Bullis Charter School. With respect to that vote, at that time, the board was, I think it's fair to say, was, was supportive of charter schools, kind of like startup charter schools are a little bit of a darling in Silicon Valley. So the board at that time did approve a number of charter schools. And after I joined in 2007, we did approve a number of charter schools, Rocketship being one of the more, not pervasive, but anyway, most popular. And they, they've done some awesome things with respect to serving underserved communities and Eastside San Jose, providing an alternative to some of the school districts, local school districts there, which had not been serving their children as well. And so being able to have those choices. And then in, in Bullis, kind of in parallel, people are choosing to go to Bullis. And so I think that's a good thing. And that if, if they don't like it, they don't have to go. So people are certainly able, and that's the whole point of charter schools too, is that people can, students and families can vote with their feet. If the charter school is not serving, is not being competitive, is not being worthwhile, you know, serving their students and serving the community, then parents can, can leave.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, Jessica, I know the question was to Grace, but I think it's fair to give you a chance to respond if you'd like quickly. And then we're going to be wrapping up.
Yeah. So the charter school, you know, as, as you know, was born before Grace was there. I believe it's actually Margaret Abicogo was on the board at the time and is one of the people who approved it. And I, as it relates to Los Altos School District and BCS, the reason why people may choose LASD, choose BCS over LASD is simply because it is, is a choice. And we are a default. Los Altos School District is in the top 1% of school districts in the state. And I do believe, I do 100% agree that BCS is a high-performing school, as are all of our schools in Los Altos School District. Simply people choose BCS because they think it's better because it is a choice and not the default. And yes, people do come back and forth. A lot of people that have been coming back to us recently are specifically not getting their special education needs met. And just on Wednesday night this week, we heard that the County Office of Education sent the BCS a letter of concern relating to four specific cases of students that were disenrolled from BCS because they could, decided they couldn't educate them and they couldn't serve their special education needs. And they had to come back to LASD for those needs. And anyway.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you both. For everyone's benefit, our next meeting will be Friday, October 4th from 8:30 to 9:30. Please join us for a discussion entitled MVLA School Board Candidates with Vadim Katz, Alex Levich and Li Zhang. If you'd like to be added to the LACC mailing list, please email info@losaltoscommunitycoalition.org. The email will be posted in the chat. And a big thank you, as always, to the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation for providing LACC with financial and in-kind support. Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Jessica. Really appreciate you taking the time. I'm sorry we ran over a little bit. And we'll look forward to seeing everybody in a few weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.